Thank you. I call this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education to order. We do have a quorum this evening. We have two board members absent, but we do have a quorum. And at this time, I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Gesford will be leading us.
At the Pledge of Allegiance to define the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for approval of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussion of tonight's agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to amend the agenda.
Ms. Fisher, how so?
Okay, I have two items. First one, I move to remove the approval of our minutes, specifically the two closed session minutes and the business meeting minutes from the August 7th meeting, since we have two board members who are absent.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gesford. Any discussion of that amendment? All those in favor? Right, we're unanimous.
And I have a second item for to amend the agenda, and that would be I move to add under new business, an item concerning the student board members' training fees for the Maryland Association of Boards of Education.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gesford. Any discussion about that amendment? No, so the vote is on that amendment. All those in favor? Okay, thank you, we're unanimous. And now the vote is on the amended agenda. All those in favor of approving the amended agenda for this evening? And we are unanimous. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have the first part of the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael.
Thank you, President Williams. Very excited tonight. We have a number of young folks with us tonight. Going to share a little bit about their experience with particularly reading this summer. We know that there's a risk of summer learning loss when our students don't participate in some type of schooling or reading, or reading with their family, or to themselves, or to their pet, or whatever. And we're excited that we have a group of students with us tonight that are going to share a little bit about how they didn't, not only prevented summer learning loss, but actually grew possibly in some various reading areas. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Laura Hanks.
All right, good evening. Is this on?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, good evening, and thank you for welcoming us here tonight. To get students to come in during the summer is quite a celebration. We made a different approach this summer to our summer program and summer learning. It was offered to us through our Striving Readers Grant that we received. We purchased something called Lit Camps, which is a format, kind of thematic summer program. What attracted us to Lit Camps is the positive approach to literacy instruction, very different than what would be traditional. But it's also integrated between social emotional skills and literacy instruction. So there's a big emphasis on how we talk and discuss about what we read, about the impact that conversation and discussion and being a community of readers has on students' reading. And we've had a lot of positive feedback from teachers and students as well. And tonight, we get to share some of those personal experiences, not only about the positive approach to the time they spent this summer with us, but the results to that work that's happened. So aside from just the Lit Camps, there were also several other initiatives that were happening throughout the summer with our students. And we have a high school student here to kind of share her experience through an online blog and through book studies that have been happening, where they don't even have to come on campus to be able to participate in the summer learning experience. So I could talk all night, but I'd rather transfer the time over to our students. So I am sharing with you, we have students that are representing, our high school student is from Bispa. We have middle school students represented from Western Heights, E. Russell Hicks and Boonsborough Middle, and our elementary students from Williamsport Elementary and Jonathan Hager. And I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves to you as they speak.
My name is Allison Klingon. This year, I will be a sophomore creative writer at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. At the end of my freshman year, we were told about a variety of summer learning opportunities. We were offered the chance to take our iPads home for the summer, which had new applications that promoted our summer learning, including digital magazines, college and career information, and trivia. Students were also made aware of Khan Academy. The staff encouraged daily writing and reading, and extra credit was offered as extra motivation. Bispa is on a couple of social media sites, which is a great way of communicating with students, as well as reminding them to keep reading and writing throughout the summer. Regular library visits are also encouraged. One of the main school-wide summer learning activities is the One School, One Book Initiative. During the last week of school, the entire student body, as well as the staff, were given a book called The Fifty Seven Bus. It wasn't a requirement to read the book, but it was an encouraged option. There have been discussions throughout the summer on Google Classroom, asking our opinion on the book and the events in the book. I read the book and took part in those discussions. It was interesting to hear the other students' perspectives and opinions. I believe it was a great choice of book for a few reasons. First of all, it was a lot of fun to read. Once I started, I didn't want to put it down. It was also a great topic. The Fifty Seven Bus dealt with gender identity, which is something that some teenagers know a lot about and some want to learn more about. It was written about true events. All of it was nonfiction, yet it was written in a way that made it read like a novel, which I personally loved. And I've heard others say they enjoyed that about the book as well. Besides reading The Fifty Seven Bus, I have mainly focused on my personal reading and writing. I have always loved to write. I try to write for my own personal enjoyment every day. This summer, I have written around seventeen thousand words, which is approximately forty-five to fifty pages. I make weekly trips to the library with my family, and I have read almost eleven books this summer so far, which averages over a book a week. I appreciate the opportunity to share my experiences throughout the summer. Thank you.
I think we should applaud.
Hello, my name is Meredith Jones, and I'm a sixth grade student at E. Russell Hicks. Thank you for inviting me this evening to share my experience from the summer learning camp. We read several different stories, and my favorite was The Broken Bike Boy and The Queen of Thirty-Third Street. I love writing the next chapter of the book and playing games with our vocab boards. I love bunk time when we could find a comfortable spot to read. And we also did projects with posters. And I appreciate this summer camp opportunity.
Hello, my name is Keisha Marie Hogan, and I'm going to Western Heights. And my favorite part of the Lit Camp was when we read The Broken Bike Boy and The Queen of Thirty-Third Street. And I love that we play a lot of games with it, and then we write a chapter. It had twenty-six, and we write the twenty-seventh. And it was a lot of fun. And then like, we had a lot of games with it, and we did a lot of activities with it. Like, we had like, if we were like, we didn't like the book, and then we liked the book, and then like, um, and we got to talk about it and everything. And we had like, to pick sides. We agree with the question, or the answer of the question and stuff, and it was good fun. So I wish I could be again in the Lit Camp.
Hi, my name is Kaylee, and I'm going to Boonsborough Middle School. I liked the Lit Camp because the teacher did fun activities with us, read cool books, and discussed the books to us, and took us outside to play cool games. Also, most of the work wasn't that hard, and she led us working groups.
So the Lit Camps were set up just like a camp, where students were in bunks, and they had bunker time to read, where they could be in a comfortable environment. Our elementary students have some successes to share with you as well. And this is Austin. And Austin, can you tell us about your summer?
I went past the level, third grade level.
Ooh.
So where did you start this summer?
K, then I made it up to O.
So reading levels go by alphabet sometimes when we assess students. And you said you were at a K before you started?
Yeah.
And now he's reading a level O book, meaning he's gotten himself to grade level, right? Super, great job. What did you like most about the year?
That it was fun.
It was fun, and you liked going each day?
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Naveya. I have learned my math and reading better than I did last year. I like it because you get to see your friends before you go back to school. You learn the golden rule, that is kindness. You can do fun activities like math games. You do arts and crafts, like drawing pictures. Come next year, it is fun.
And Naveya, what happened with your reading this summer?
I was on level N, then I went to P.
Hello, my name is Thalia Swaby, and I am a third grader at Jonathan Hager Elementary. My favorite book from Lit Camp was Owen and Mose. The lesson I learned was that sometimes friends can be like a family, and make you feel like you're a part of a family. My favorite part of Lit Camp was bunk time, because a lot of books are very interesting, and I like to read. My favorite spot to read was on the rug. One skill I learned that will help me be successful in September is to add reasoning to my writing. I'd like to share an opinion piece I wrote from Owen and Mose. Try to see if you understand my reasoning. You'll write an opinion piece to address whether you think Owen and Mose were really friends. Be sure to state your opinion clearly and refer back to the book for evidence to back up your opinion. I think Owen and Mose are friends, and here's my evidence. In the story, when Owen wasn't eating, Mose fed him. Another thing that I think shows friendship is they did a lot of things together, like swim. Owen was weak and wouldn't eat, so if it weren't for Mose, Owen would have died. I know friends would save a friend from dying. I chose that they swam together, because I liked to swim with my best friends. That's how I knew they were friends.
Hello, my name is Jason Swaby. I'm a third grader at Jonathan Hager Elementary. My favorite book from Lit Camp was Not Norman. The lesson I learned was to be thankful for what you have, and try not to get rid of a pet or, and/or basically anything that you get. My favorite part of Lit Camp was writing power. I liked it because I got to see how many details I could add and see an improvement in my writing fluency. One skill I learned that will help me be successful in September is to be more kind to others. I was inspired by The Big Red Lollipop, because Rubino was being kind, because she didn't want her little sister to experience what she had to experience.
Good evening, my, I'm Denver Swaby, grade three, from Jonathan Hager Elementary. My favorite book from Lit Camp was The Big Red Lollipop. The lesson I learned was that you should share and be nice to others, because Sama was being mean to Rubino, because she ate almost all of her lollipop. When Sama got invited to a birthday party, Ami said to take your little sister, and Rubino said, no, let her go by herself. My favorite part of Lit Camp was bunk time, because you could choose where your spot was, and you could choose where your book. My favorite spot was the rug. One skill I learned that will help me be successful in September is to be, is to better understand the book by answering questions about the book.
So these are just some examples of the success that we've been hearing throughout the county. So we are excited that we will be able to offer this opportunity to students. And finally, I would say that we're, everyone is invited tomorrow night from five to seven. We have our Lit Fest, which is a culminating activity for all of our summer literacy efforts. And it's right here on the grounds of CES.
Thursday night?
Thursday night. Oh, tomorrow's Wednesday, isn't it? Thank you. Thursday night. You can come tomorrow, and we can celebrate literacy, but it'd be less personalized if you came Thursday. Thank you.
Do board members have any questions for our students? We certainly appreciate them coming out tonight. I believe the three on the end are triplets, is that right?
Oh, wow.
So I wanted the board to be aware of that.
Austin is a one of three, another triplet.
Wow. Triplets are well represented here tonight. Any questions at all from board members?
Questions, colleagues? Comments?
No questions, but great job, all of you. Congratulations. Glad you enjoyed it.
Yes, boys and girls, thank you so much for coming and sharing your experiences with us. It sounds like you had a great time and a great way to spend your summer. So congratulations on all that progress you made and all that learning that happened. And I wish you all the best. School's going to start soon. Are you ready? Are you ready? I think you're going in as good, strong readers and writers, so have a great school year.
Okay, thank you all for coming. You can feel free to go ahead and leave. We appreciate you being here, and thank you, parents.
His sisters, they're two little girls, and Austin. I thought these three kids were a lot alike.
Bye. Okay, we're ready. We'll go ahead and have our healthcare update.
Excuse me.
Welcome to the evening, President Williams, and Vice President Stauffer, members of the board, and Dr. Michael. As you know, this past year, we've been bringing you quarterly updates on the status of the healthcare fund. That's because of some financial results that were negative in prior years, and we wanted to keep you apprised of what's going on this year. We have a good, a good report to bring to you tonight. Also, I want to introduce Trish O'Reilly, our new supervisor of employee benefits. She started at the end of May, and she met some members of the finance committee, but has not met the full board yet. So this is her first presentation. I'll start off with a summary of financial results. You can see there, we are through quarter four of the fiscal year, and we'll compare the year-to-date numbers there between seventeen and eighteen. Just wanted to point out that the, in the middle there, the administration costs are actually down seven percent from the prior year. That's largely due to a fee that we had under the Affordable Care Act that has gone away. Also, our net income at the bottom there, you can see that we've generated as much net income this year as we had loss in the prior year. So we started off our fund balance very much in the red last year at four point one million dollars, and we, we have made this year an excess of revenue over expenses of four point eight million dollars. You can see there how we realized that quarter by quarter. We had a good fourth quarter, and we're back in positive territory now at six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars of fund balance as of the end of the fiscal year. However, we still do have two point three million dollars to go to, to reach our goal of three million dollars in the fund balance. Here you can see what our experience has been over the last ten years with regard to our actual fund balance compared to our target, three million. You can see it bounces around. It's really hard to keep it on the level exactly, but at one point, we were up six point five million above the goal, and then in seventeen, we were down seven million dollars below the goal, and we've recovered over half of that ground this year. Here you can see that what our fund balance and our claims have been over the prior years and administrative expenses as well. You'll note that the bottom line there, we had, actually had a decrease in claims, a little, I mean, claims were, were pretty much flat with a slight decrease of zero point four percent. That's the best year we've had since two thousand and seven, when we only had a point three percent increase in claims. I also want to bring your attention to the point, to the fact that in two thousand and eight and nine, we had very high increases in claims, higher even than we had recently when we, when we talked about, you know, the bad experience that we had in FY sixteen. But the fact that we've got claims levels at forty-six million for two thousand and eighteen, even, even with that low increase, or a slight decrease actually, we're still higher in our claims than we were three years ago in two thousand and fifteen. But it's very good to see the rate of increase slowing down each year.
This graph is going to show you the claims trend over the past eleven years. You'll see the spikes in two thousand and eight, nine, and again in two thousand and sixteen. And again, to reiterate, that the decrease in the claims trend, while it's a lower increase in the claims trend, is still above three years ago, as David pointed out. The next slide has a few points of interest. You'll see that we have increased the medical premiums by percent this past year, but there was no claims to dental revision. We have engaged with a company to conduct a claims audit with Cigna, and that's due to due diligence, based on due diligence. Our healthcare committee has met three times recently, and that's ongoing discussions for plan design and also cost mitigating programs. The next graph will demonstrate the open enrollment migration from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. You'll see there was not a lot of movement there. And finally, we wanted to provide you a graph on the tier comparisons.
Not a lot of change there, but just a little bit. We wanted to tell you how, how it has changed from year to year a little bit. At this time, we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Colleagues, questions? So Mr. Brandenburg and Ms. O'Reilly, comments?
This obviously represents a huge part of our budget. You know, other than salaries, it's probably one of our most significant parts of the budget. So we're fortunate this year that we only had the five percent increase in claims, and so far, we're optimistic for this upcoming year that that's going to be sufficient based on this past year's performance. It was unfortunate we had to kind of catch up with that twenty-five percent increase last year, but it appears that it's, it's worked pretty much as expected, and we're well on our way to getting back to that three million dollar balance.
The committee continues to look at, and that's part, part of the purpose of having the frequent committee meetings that we've been having, we continue to look at ways to, to control costs but provide, you know, a very good benefit, you know, and maintain our competitiveness, but to try to control costs as much as we can.
I just, I just want to say, I know, I brought this up the last time, I should say, I questioned this the last time, David, when you were here. Do you feel like we are on track to get that three million number that we need to be? I mean, are we on that trajectory?
I think we are. I think we are, yes. I mean, a year ago, I thought we would have a three million dollar surplus this year, and we actually had four point eight. That was due to our claims being under control, you know, being at a much lower increase than we felt they were going to be. And I, you know, the activities that we've undertaken with the help of the healthcare committee recently, I, I believe that we are on a good trajectory.
Because that, that's really, that's impressive that, you know, we're, we're seeing these numbers, so that's good. So thank you very much, and thanks for your staff and everyone who's working to get these under control.
In two thousand and sixteen, have we identified the reasons back then? And what's the history on why the claims shot up so high that year? Any, any, any history on that?
We looked at that. We had, we had some, I think we had some very high drug claims at, at times, specialty medicines, injectables, and so forth. We also, we just had more utilization, and then it's the same, you know, it just, it's hard to explain. It's, and you know, and we had the same thing back in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine also. It's just based on utilization and, and the particular problems that our group has at that particular time. I mean...
Sometimes it's just cyclical. It comes around every so many years, and I've seen that at other places as well. Unfortunately, it coincided with moving to the Cigna healthcare.
Yes, because we, that's the year that we, we moved over to Cigna, so that might have been a contributing factor.
I, I don't, I don't think that was a factor, because we, we had the same plan with the same benefits, it's just a different, a different administrator. So we, we've kept the plan, the same plan design throughout that transition. And you can see, we did have this, you know, high claims spikes back in eight and nine under CareFirst, which we had for decades. But it's just, and that came off of a year of, of only a point three percent increase that, a year before. I'm just trying to recall, I know that there were some, some medical, some particular medical diagnoses that were high that particular year, and, and we did drill into it, and we found that everything was legitimate.
Wasn't that the year that we had the helicopter issue?
We, well, that may be the first year that we started paying more for the helicopters, because, because that was treated somewhat differently.
Yeah, yeah.
What else? Mr. Brandenburg, you mentioned the claims audit. Has that begun, or is that...
We, it's, it's begun as far as the planning and everything. It's scheduled for December, I believe. We've, we've got the engagement letter, we've got, we've had planning conversations with Cigna and with the claims audit team. So we are, it's underway, but because of being able to schedule with the auditor and with Cigna, it won't actually take place in, beginning until December. But, but everything is in place, and that, that process is, is underway. December, but everything is in place, and that process is underway.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we see the challenges with the claims, they kind of spike, and really caused by surprise, positively by surprise this year, I think has been the good news, so let's hope we continue on that path.
Thank you. Dr. Michael, before you get to your update...
Okay.
Could I backtrack and...
Absolutely.
Catch us up on a few things that we skipped over. We have, no one signed up for a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the board during our public comment? No? Okay, that's, that's fine, and we have no old business to conduct this evening, and we do have one item of new business based on the amended agenda, and that is the consideration of the payment of fees for our student representatives' orientation at MAB. The amount of that orientation, the charge is $150. We have, under the category, elected board member services, other charges. There's a line item miscellaneous, and I'm recommending that we charge this $150 to that particular line item. So, if I could have a motion to do that?
So, moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. All those in favor of motion? Okay, we're unanimous. Thank you. That takes care of it, and we're back to superintendent's update.
Somehow, I must have blanked out there or something, I don't know what happened.
Excited.
Yeah, we're on a roll.
On a roll. So, I've continued on a roll. We've had two great days at New Teacher Academy, yesterday and today, and Williamsburg High School, which continues tomorrow. We have approximately 135 teachers there, and actually tomorrow, we have three brand-new, brand-new teachers that were just hired this afternoon. While they didn't get the benefit of Monday and Tuesday, I understand that all three of them will be attending New Teacher Academy tomorrow. And we're down to our last couple openings, and I really credit the hard work of our HR staff, our administrators across the system, here at the central office, and principals to get us fully staffed, and I anticipate that we'll be ready with staff for the opening of school. So, our new teachers are back this week. Our current staff will be back on Monday, and two weeks from today, students will be back, and we'll be excited to have them here. We did have a little bit of a misprint in the newspaper regarding our last day of school. I want to be clear with parents that it is September 14th. That does have snow days built into that date, but we need to kind of be planning that way, just in case we do get...
June 14th.
June, what did I say?
September, so short, short school year.
Yeah. I might have the newspaper all here today. June 14th, and we do have snow days built into that. Really, really interesting part, half the staff didn't catch that, so thank you, Mr. Bigford. You know, I've been very passionate, excited about our professional learning opportunities during the summer and throughout the year. I know a lot of people don't find this interesting, but our staff has really turned out in great numbers this summer. I can't tell you the number of workshops that I've stopped by, and just a significant number of people. Granted, they're being paid a token amount, but they're giving up of their summer and participating, helping write curriculum, helping learn more about their craft, and I think at this point, we're thinking we're right around 3,000 participants in summer workshops, which has got to be a record for Washington County Public Schools, as far as I know. Our supervisory staff and content specialists, I know, have been working almost every week, and in this week, they were writing to New Teacher Academy, and next week, they're back with professional development with our current staff, and I'm sure they're anxious for the start of school, where they'll at least get a sigh of relief before they start visiting schools. But I'm very proud of them and the work that they've done. Last week, I attended a two-day session for a few minutes each day of our pre-K program this year. Again, a huge initiative we have going on. We're expanding to 955 full-day pre-K slots, and our staff has worked very hard on expanding their opportunities and understanding of how to use our curriculum, how to work with children for a full day of pre-K. I did have one slide that I wanted to show today, and this is actually one of the articles that the group was reading, and I just found this really interesting. Moreover, children who begin school with poor math skills typically do not catch up. So, I kind of thought that made sense, but then as I read on, across the nation, children who have low math scores in the fall of their kindergarten year, you're five years old, but if you lag behind your peers, basically, you never catch up all the way through eighth grade. Now, you can see the rest of the slide, it's particularly true for low-income families, for children of color, and that, to me, is just all the more reason we have to continue to work with our pre-K program, work with our kindergarten program, close these achievement gaps up for our students. I think it's going to make a difference in the rest of their life if we can help our children be ready for kindergarten, and I just think it's a really important initiative, and really appreciate the board's support for this, and hopefully can continue to get additional support here in the future. I did want to make note, too, that last week, we had a lot of our educational support personnel in. It's something they've been asking for, to have professional development opportunities. We had quite a few people, a lot of visitors here, that provided the professional development for educational support personnel, and will continue to do that. And lastly, I'd like to ask our project manager, Brad Otto, and Mark Stevens, to come forward. They're going to share a little bit about some summer projects here briefly with you. Jeff Crew's going to kick them off, I think.
Evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. I'm pleased to bring with me Mr. Brad Otto, who I think you met at the last meeting, who will be leading the construction of Sharpsburg Elementary for the school system. Also with him is Mark Stevens. I don't believe you've had an opportunity to meet Mark Stevens yet, but he is a maintenance manager within the Maintenance and Operations Department. He oversees really a lot of our general tradesmen, our carpenters, our plumbers, our electricians, through their work every day maintaining our schools, but through the summertime as well, Mark really leads a lot of the smaller projects that are maintained and managed by our Maintenance and Operations Team. So, they're here today to give you an update on some of the many projects we've done this summer, show you some photos of some of the work that's been done across the system, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Otto.
Thank you, Mr. Prue.
We've had three secure vestibules that we've, we've managed this summer. One is the enlargement of the vestibule at Rockland Woods Elementary School, which you see on the left. We installed a transaction window consistent with installations in a lot of our other facilities, and made some other improvements to the intercom system and other things to help the staff in the front office. The middle photo is a photo of Northern Middle School, one of our largest secure entrance projects to date, and what you're seeing there is the second set of doors that was across the entire length of the lobby. Additionally, we installed a secure entrance at Boonsborough Middle School. There were two main entrances, and we chose one of them that had a room off to the side to be used as a reception office, and constructed a vestibule around that function. Additionally, we had one roof replacement this summer at Clear Spring Elementary. It included replacement of the soffit, which was in, in poor shape, so we had, we had that in the roof contract, which you see on the picture on the right. At Fountaindale Elementary, we had a lot of work going on this summer. We had a total HVAC replacement, replacement of the electrical switch gear, and also replacement of the sump pumps down in the basement, and adding those to emergency power, adding a small generator to power those sump pumps. So, you see some of the gear being replaced on the left. The electricians have been busy all summer, and on the right, you can see some of the new ductwork and a hole in the roof to accommodate a new rooftop unit. We also completed Phase Two of the HVAC replacement project at Boonsborough Elementary School. What you're seeing on the left is new ceiling grid and new ductwork in the gym. We're providing cooling to the gym now, and the, the large unit on the right is on top of the gym at Boonsborough Elementary School. At Northern Middle School, we worked with Ellsworth Electric, and Ellsworth coordinated with Hagerstown City Light. We replaced the main switch gear in the facility, and also the transformer outside, right behind the doors into the mechanical room. So, on the left, you see the old switch gear and the old transformer, and on the right is a picture of the new, the new gear before it was installed, staged in Ellsworth's yard, and then the new transformer. It's a little hard to tell from these photos, but I was, I was astonished at the size of the old transformer versus the size of the new transformer, just how far things have come since 1980, when the original transformer was in. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Stevens to elaborate on some of the projects that Mr. Prue mentioned from the Maintenance Department. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for being here this evening. In Maintenance and Operations, we were, we were quite busy this summer, and I, as Jeff was saying, I kind of wear two hats during the summer, as a project manager and managing the Maintenance Department. I can say, a lot of the exterior projects, we really did struggle, as you can hear it raining right now, and there is, there are a few things that we will, we will continue to keep going here. Everybody's done their best trying to keep ahead and keep things going. Just on an overall basis, I think we might jump through the first slide, but we did 28 painting projects around the county, 10 flooring projects, 21 asphalt and concrete projects. We did a complete eight classroom renovations, 20 playground improvements, two HVAC projects. We rebuilt a cooling tower. We did over 20 doors, that's just in-house with, with my guys, my staff. We did many lighting upgrades. We updated the media center. The list can go on and on, but we really came together, we got a lot of work done, and all the different projects, it seemed that, that trades were continually going back and forth, and we worked pretty well together. And on this slide here, you can see some of the elementary school rooms there at Clear Spring Elementary that a contractor painted for us. They turned out wonderful and beautiful. We can see Boonsborough High School, and that work there. On that slide is the athletic area. When you come in, it looks like a completely different building, and that was done in-house. Here is the, some flooring projects. Again, we have, kind of look there, we have Clear Spring High School, we have a media center in the same room, we have a lab at Clear Spring High School, and we also have, I'm an example there, E. Russell Hicks, flooring project. Up here, the, that's the Smithsburg bandroom being carpeted. We can see Fountain Rock Elementary. It's completely wide open in the center. That's about, I'd say, 85% through on that project. It is done now, so I just want to scare you, just the picture there. And we can see another picture of Clear Spring High School. And I must mention that one thing is that is very rewarding to me, is to be able to walk through a high school, and I saw some of the band students in Smithsburg, and summer bands going on, and they're carrying on, and Mrs. Carter says, "Look here, this is Mr. Stevens," and I hear this, "Thank you, Mr. Stevens," and it's just, they're getting a new bandroom, and they're, they're pretty excited. So, it's, it's very rewarding to hear that when you're out in the schools. So, here's a picture of Clear Spring Elementary on the left. We completed the milling. When I first came last year, I looked at the school, and I said, "This has got to be a problem," and in one time, because it looked like it had a drainage issue, and sure enough, it, we had some license and drainage issue, and it's turned out wonderful so far. The paving's down, and it, there's not one bit of water that's stuck on there, even, even with the rain, we had this pass Saturday up there, so it's going to be good. There's Old Forge in the middle, and we have Smithsburg Middle School. We had some sidewalk replacement there. Tech High, we had a, we've had a pretty fun time over there with Tech High, completely renovating the space. As you can see, the kind of before picture, we have a service upgrade in the middle, and you can see an after picture of just everything removed, and the wall's painted, and I wish I could show you a quick picture of right now, but the, the floor has been polished, the concrete looks beautiful, and this looks like terrazzo when you walk in over there. It's, it's, it's great. Here's some different shots of some playgrounds around the county. That is still in process. Like I told you, we're, we're dealing with water. Some of the areas that was dug out, there's, there's just much water waiting to put some equipment in, but we're getting there.
So, and I'll close up this final slide. I mean, at this point, you know, they've gone through a lot of the projects that they've been managing, and we'd, we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about what's going on downtown with the urban improvement project. Bowman and through their contractor, Callis Construction, are hard at work doing the demo work on, on the building that will become our new building. As you know, the building next to the theater, so the photo to the left from the front, right off Potomac Street, the theater has demoed their front portion of the building that is coming down. Callis is working actually from the backside of our building. The back rear two-story concrete section has been taken down, the, the makeshift decking and fire escapes have come down, and they've started actually, from the roof down, they're picking that building, the front section, sort of picking almost by hand because of just the tight quarters they're working in with the theater. You're dealing with the main street right there, so they're working little by little just to get that building down, and you can see the vision from the back, if you're familiar with, with really where the back of our building is at Barbara Young School, with our little plaza that's been out back, you're sort of looking from that vantage point to the section of the building, the two-story sections have been taken down, clear into, to the theater space. So, that project is well on its way, and, you know, things are going pretty well downtown. With that, the staff is here and can take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions?
If you have any comments, or don't have any questions, but the comment, you know, it looks like you've got a lot accomplished, and I know it just seems like every time you go by, there's, there's nothing at the schools, and I'm thinking, "Man, they've got all this done." So, I look at these pictures, and I'm very impressed that your team has worked so hard over the summer with minimal, you know, issues from the outside, so it looks like you've worked very hard and done a good job. So, thanks, thanks to you and all your teams for what you're doing through the summer to get, get us ready for the school year. Thank you very much.
And I think, Mr. Gessford, this would be a good opportunity as well to commend our custodial staff for the work that they do. You know, there's a lot of follow-behind work, not just the regular cleaning that they do every summer, which they do a fantastic job at. When we go in and we tear up, tear up a school, we do a project, there's a tremendous amount of cleaning, and we've got some schools still that, you know, we're, we're getting final inspections tomorrow, Thursday, and custodial staff will be working long hours here through the weekend to be ready for our teachers on Monday and our students the following Monday, so they're doing a tremendous job, and really, you know, working to the nth degree to make sure our schools are ready.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Again, I want to extend my, my thanks as well to custodial staff, our trade staff. Appreciate, Mr. Gessford, you recognize them, and Mr. Prue. We ran a, while we were at Williamsburg today during the New Teacher Academy, we actually had a new freezer and refrigerator walk-in replaced. The school's 40-plus years old, the, the conditions of the freezer just drip water, condensation constantly from there on the boxes, on top of the ladies as they would went out and, and get food, and then the efficiency of those things have diminished substantially. So, that work was just wrapping up, but yet, we still have to clean the area, because dirt and dust from demoing something from the inside is, is quite extensive. So, custodial staff has worked great, long, hard hours to get ready. Mo team has moed and moed and moed, much like many of us at home, I guess. Our bus drivers are back tomorrow, within service tomorrow and Thursday to prepare themselves, and they have link crew runs and things like that for next week as they prepare. Food service staff will be in cleaning things next week and preparing for food service. Again, of course, our whole teaching force, ESP force, will be back. So, summer's almost over, and we're very excited about all the work that people worked and, and the hard work they've done. So, thank you to staff. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Michael. Next on our agenda is Personnel Action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, and board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there a motion?
For approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Right.
Motion is on approval of Personnel Actions. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
And that brings us to committee reports, and we have three committee chairs here. Mrs. Fisher, would you like to give a report on policy, credit?
Not a whole lot to report, because we have not met since the last business meeting, but we do have a meeting scheduled next Tuesday, the 28th, at 9:15.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
The Facilities Committee did meet this morning, and I'll be reporting at the next meeting, but we do plan to have a scheduled special meeting September the 11th. We have some things that we need to review, so we'll be having a double meeting.
Thank you.
The, yes, we had the upcoming Finance Committee meeting that was originally scheduled for next Tuesday, has now been rescheduled for Monday, August 27th, at 8:00 a.m., so a day earlier. Still same time and in the operations room.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Okay, that brings us to miscellaneous business and consideration of future agenda items. You have as part of your packet a future agenda items list, and I think you can see what we have planned in the upcoming weeks. If you have any questions about any of those agenda items, look for consensus to move forward with those at our meetings, and if you have any other suggestions for future meetings, please let a committee member know, Dr. Michael, Mr. Stauf, or myself. And we'll just move on now to board member comments. Mr. Bigford, would you like to begin, please?
Uh, nothing.
Just quick?
Nothing.
Nothing? Mr. Gessford?
Just the fact that it was nice, I mean, we talked about the involvement of our staff, and it was nice to see principals, assistant principals here tonight supporting students of their schools. So, you know, that's just another kudos to our staff who don't quit, you know, for the summer, and they're still there to support our programming. So that's really impressive, and I'm glad they were over here tonight.
Well said, Mr. Gessford. Mrs. Fisher?
Just want to say I enjoyed my time this morning at the New Teacher Academy. It was exciting to see so many new teachers getting ready with their iPads. Dr. Kuhn was, I think, really opening their eyes to some new programs and things that they weren't familiar with, and I wish every single one of them great success, and it's just about time, so.
Any final words, Dr. Michael? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn.